I'd like to call the meeting order. It's about 7:00 PM. Welcome to the meeting of the Howard's Board Appeals on this date, October 25th. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications in form of board appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard and the Massachusetts zoning enabling act. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting, which we are. Any person attending to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the chair. During this meeting, the chair will recognize promptly a member of the board, the secretary, or attorneys presenting a case to inform the chair if a protocol is not being followed. While in session, while in open session, those wishing to present comments or ask questions regarding a case are requested to fill out an information form on the podium. I didn't check it, but it should be there. So if you want to speak. Besides, the applicant's going to be in the front table here. But anybody else that wants to speak, you just need to put out your name and fill out for your email address. The chairman has asked each board member to identify themselves. John, if you could kick things off?
John August.
Dave Nunley.
Al Donahue.
Brian Sullivan.
Dave Reyer.
Kenneth Dixon.
The, so I'd like to first, why don't we, oh, call the first case?
Case number 2023-31, Joseph and Kathleen Emerson through Paul Muldoon of Muldoon Architects. The owner of the property is located at 26 Moody Road, SS Map, 23 Pasol A3-4 in the Arrow Zoning District. The applicant seeks a special permit to raise and replace three existing non-conforming single-family dwellings pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 32554 and MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6.
Now, there were no notices that were received by the board from any of the town apartments, including the board of health. So no one gave us any comment on it, so particularly as you go through the process of getting approval tonight, you know, you obviously need a BLC board of health approval on anything, but don't be raising red flags. And we did not receive any notices from any of the butters regarding the case. So voting on the case tonight. The Al, Dave Nunley, David Reyer, John August, and Kenneth Dixon. And I'd like to ask the applicant to introduce himself and present his case.
Good evening. Paul Muldoon here, Muldoon Architects, representing Joe and Kathleen Emerson and their project at 26 Moody Road. We're requesting an approval of a special permit to remove and replace the existing dwelling. Seen on our documents, we provided a certified plot plan from Moran Engineering dated 9/12, and our plans and elevations dated August 31st. The existing home has some deficiencies, a few cracks in the foundation, a lot of mold and mildew in the basement, which was the impetus for either a major renovation or a new house, and we've settled on the new house tract. The easterly setback is currently 28 feet, will be reduced to 25.1, where 25 is required. The northerly setback is 24.4, reduced to 20.1, where 20 is required. The rear or westerly setback is 49.3, will be reduced to 46.4, remaining conforming dimensions. And then the southerly setback, which is the existing non-conforming setback at 9.2 feet, will increase slightly to 10 feet, where 20 is required. The building coverage is at 14.3% and will increase with our modest 66 square foot footprint increase to the maximum 15%. The site coverage is at 20.6 existing, 23% proposed, where 30 is required. We'll be creating some new habitable space in that southerly setback, intensifying the existing non-conformity. Our tact here for the aesthetics of the build is really to create this quintessential Cape House. You know, shutters, dormer on top, and it mimics the shape of the existing house, where we have a main box, and then to the left of it, we have a smaller box. There's an existing projection on the rear of the house as well. We've mimicked that in our proposal. We are not creating any new non-conformities. We believe that the project will not result in a substantial increase in noise, odor, fume, traffic, or congestion, and that the dwelling would not create a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. With that, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
John, would you like to kick things off?
Just to Brian's point, you know, we didn't get any feedback from the health department. I know you're going from three bedrooms to four, you know, with the plan. Is that something that the, you've gotten any feedback from them on the septic or?
We have an approved septic plan installed in 2004 for four bedrooms. Now, the plan says office, that is indeed a bedroom on that first floor existing, so we're going from four to four.
And they won't consider the family room to be five?
Not that we've heard.
That's my only question.
I have no questions?
I have no questions either.
No, I was just going to ask the same question that John did, so providing that, I'm a little concerned that we didn't get any feedback from anybody. I'm assuming it went through the normal process?
I came to the office today and asked a question, and they didn't receive anything. It's unusual. I was surprised. I typically get that same form. This is the first time I haven't heard back from the health department. But obviously, when they go through the process, if they're approved and they go through the process of the building inspector, that will still filter through the board of health, which is the primary concern.
Right. The initial steps in the design was to contact the board of health and have them send us the most recent septic design, which is a four-bedroom system. So we have that in hand, and that's why we designed the four-bedroom new home.
Sure, and I understand John's question, whether or not the family room, the way it's configured, if there's any reason, that might get considered by the board of health. But as long as you're, I didn't, I go back and look at it, as long as your openings, I think, are, do they require fi- what is the opening of the family room?
I don't know the exact dimension, but we can get it to five feet if we need to, if it's not there already.
Yeah, they generally require five feet, and we've, you know, we've got a door.
No other question?
On the plot plan, we have a portion of Lot 3 and then a Lot 4. Can you explain what that is?
From what I understand, it is a single lot, but the history of it was, it was separated, separate spaces at one point.
Okay, but I assume it's merged into the one lot now.
Correct.
The other thing I note is on the plot plan, under building coverage proposed, there's an asterisk at the 15%, 14, 60 square feet, and it says, when you go down to the asterisk, per 11323 architectural plans. But the plans you submitted here tonight are dated 8/31/23. So I think if the board sees fit to grant this, we need to put a condition in that building coverage shall not exceed 15% of the lot area, just so when Brian stamps on that's clear. We have a discrepancy in the plan submitted as, between that and the note on the plot plan. So we want to be very clear that we're not approving anything over 15%.
I have no problem with that. It's a typo. Dan Crotto and I.
You think it's a typo?
The date on the site plan.
Okay.
But we're not, we're not over 15%. We've been very.
Okay, but since there is a discrepancy, I think we'll make that. That's all I have.
Can I ask one question? You had said, existing and proposed, you had said 9.2 on the southerly, and then you went, you're proposing 10?
Yes.
It says 9.4 on our paperwork. Is that?
On the site plan, we have 10.
10, okay.
Also proposed is going to be 2, okay. The, what side of proposed depth, any idea?
Off, off the ground, it's a single step.
Okay. And your time, given approval tonight and of course the appeals period, what's your timeframe for construction?
Submit for building permit as soon as possible. Our construction documents are done and generally ready to go.
So you're planning to start this in the spring, or actually this winter?
This year.
Was there any discussion at all with any of the butters regarding the project?
Yes. In fact, we have a couple of butters here with us tonight, both directly across the street and to the right. We've had some, some positive feedback.
All right, excellent. And you don't, so I called going down there, it, what are your anticipation of keeping construction vehicles on the site, so as it be on the street?
We're going to do absolute the best we can. So it is a small site, and it's a tight neighborhood. The contractor and I have talked about phasing the project as much as possible so that there's only two trucks, one subcontractor on site, and two trucks, a dumpster and a loading zone, as much as we possibly can. And the contractor, who's a local person here, his wife actually grew up in this house, knows the neighborhood, knows some of the neighbors. He provides his contact information to everybody as a direct abutter, so that if there is any parking issue, he'll be taken care of straight away.
So given the neighborhood, and I didn't, what are people's feeling about the day range situation?
I always think we should have it. I don't think it's fair to the neighbors to have major construction during the summer months when they're outside. I think otherwise, they really have an impediment to their full enjoyment of the property during the summer. They have guests, whatnot. I think if people can't do it during the high season, well, that's the way it is. They could have been here, you know, in July to get ready to go by September. It's the, it's the owner's problem, not something I think we should visit on the neighborhood, the neighbors in the neighborhood. So I pretty much always think we should ban construction, at least in this kind of neighborhood, where the houses are close. You know, if there was a lot of room between them, that's different, but this is.
I've got a question regarding the driveway. That driveway is for a single car right now, it appears as though it potentially can be two cars. Is that considered part of it?
There's two cars wide there, and one car deep.
There's a wooden barrier, so you can get two vehicles up into that area.
Mr. Reyer, you mentioned no construction during the summer months. Is that exterior construction, or is that interior construction as well?
Exterior.
Exterior construction, demolition or exterior construction or new landscape between, what are the dates again, June 30 and Labor Day?
Correct. Yes, and typically there's no demolition, exterior construction, that's exterior construction, or new landscaping during those months.
Great.
Right, it's framed up. You're working inside, you're all set.
We expect to be enclosed fully before the season.
That we don't care about, because it's noises muffled, and you'll be doing finish work, painting, that, you know, much quieter, but.
We still want you to be considerate regarding, of course, your cars and blocking the street and so forth. So I, I think that if we go forward here, I feel we don't necessarily need to have, keep all the construction vehicles on the property, or what's the thought process here?
I don't think they can, personally, on that property. I know, if you want to say to the extent, yeah, to the extent possible.
Right. Okay, so we're not going to, we're going to want you to keep everything on the property as best as possible. And anything parked on the street, it's because you can't get on the property.
Understood.
Out of curiosity, the right side of that home seems to be overgrown. Is that area going to be landscaped? The reason I ask that question, because it appears as though it would be large enough to bring a vehicle in up on that right side of the home.
The, there's two major trees. Both will be removed.
One, two.
Well, on that right-hand side. And yes, we feel like, once the house is in place, that's a, that's a staging area, that's a driving path.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you about those, those trees. I'm assuming they're coming down. A couple of big trees there.
Yep. They're, they're an existing nuisance with limbs falling and the like on the existing house.
Check. I don't have any other questions. So let's, this time, anybody else, you all set? I, as is known in the public, that would like to speak to this application, please go to the podium and. You know, it's okay. So you can, tell you what, you can sit, you can speak in your seat. Just be loud enough so people can hear you.
You gotta be, you gotta be louder than that. I can't hear you. I can't hear you. You'll have to come to the microphone.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, my hearing aids aren't, they don't do the job completely.
I was just going to say, I guess your rules are your rules, but most of us that are around the house are year-rounders. So if there was work going on in the summer, we don't really care. I guess I can only speak for myself. I enjoy watching houses being built. So anyways, but I think we all would.
And what's your name?
My name is Laura.
Thanks, Laura. Appreciate it.
But I guess that's a rule of the town, that you can't build.
You can't, the typical rule is that exterior construction or demolition should be done prior to June 30.
Yeah, okay, well.
After that, after the house is buttoned up.
It'll be okay.
The work inside.
It'll be all right, and we, you know, we all get along, so.
Excellent.
And it's not really a town rule, it's a condition that this board puts on to grant permission. Because over the years, we've had complaints from neighbors during the summertime, when people are out, the windows are open, and they don't want major construction, a lot of people.
I get it, I get it.
Particularly on the demolition.
Yeah.
Yeah, I get that.
Well, but even the framing and the nail guns, nail guns are aggravating as all ghetto on the chingle. I know they've got to do it, but.
It's good for you to come up, by the way, for the person who owns that property, because you are a neighbor and you speak in favor of the project.
Oh, yes, yes. I mean, the house is what's there now, but it's seen better days. And, and I think that it's probably the best thing to do, so.
Your voice tonight may have put them over the top.
Pardon me?
Your voice tonight may have put them over the top to get approval.
There you go.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to a closed public hearing. I think, to me, there's nobody else who's going to speak. That being the case, I'd like to have a motion to a closed public hearing.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair? Any additional discussion by the board?
No. I think the project meets the requirements of the Gale and Diedrich cases and the bylaw. As the proponents said, it's intensifying existing non-conformities, they're not creating any new one, and certainly, in my opinion, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it's a positive addition to the neighborhood.
I would agree. But just one question that they asked. You know, let me go back and, sorry, to answer the question. What's the percentage additional habitable space here?
We're adding about 450 square feet, percentage-wise. I don't know what that is off the top of my head. The existing first and second floor is 1740, and we're going to 2190.
All right, thank you. Okay, I guess that, would you entertain a motion?
Case number 20.
Oh, wait, I, that's a closed discussion. Motion to close discussion?
Certainly.
Okay, Dave and Ken, put that down. Okay, any votes who close all discussions, folks?
Aye.
Aye. Approved. I'd like to ask a clerk to make a motion in case.
Case number 2023-31, Joseph and Kathleen Emerson through Paul Muldoon of Muldoon Architects. The board has granted a special permit. Property is located at 26, pardon me, Moody Road, SS Map, 23 Pasol A3-4 in the zoning district. The following conditions are being placed upon this property. There'll be no demolition. There'll be no demolition.
Nope.
Or exterior construction.
Or landscaping during the period of June 30 through Labor Day of any year. During the life of the project, all construction vehicles shall be parked on the property.
Well, to the extent possible.
To the extent possible.
To be parked on the project as possible. It is a condition of this approval that the violation of the terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced to the violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to MGL Chapter 48, Section 7 of the Howard zoning bylaw, as these may be amended from time to time.
One other thought was, on the conditions, building coverage percentage should not exceed 15%. And we'll note in the motion that the current structure is a lawfully pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling, propose replacement structure will not create, will not be detrimental to the neighborhood at all.
Substantially more detrimental.
Substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
I'll second that as revised by Brian's comments.
All right. Discussion on the motion. Anybody have any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
You are approved.
Thank you so much.
Good luck, Tom. Thanks for coming. Thank you for having that shot there showing the, how the house is going to look. We've been carrying around this sketch for a while.
All right.
You'll have to frame it. Ladies, thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you for inviting me.
My daughter?
Very interesting.
Do you have a full set of claims to stamp?
Yeah. Good, good to hear.
Nice to have neighbors show up. Would that like their neighbors? Would that like their neighbors? Pre-stamp these things.
Mr. Muldoon, would you care to have these back?
I'm happy to recycle them for you.
No, we'll do that. We just didn't know we needed them.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay. All right, on to the rest of our agenda here. First up is the approval of minutes. Dave, the minutes did not get revised.
No, I saw that. Okay, I had two comments that I'll just read into the record. What's her first name?
Rachel.
Yeah, she asked me to read them in, and she'll do them. Okay, on case 2023-27, the minutes from September 27, 2023. Third line from the bottom of the first page, it presently says, "Mr. Sullivan opened the public meeting," and that really should read, "Mr. Sullivan opened the public hearing." We might want to think about changing that at some point to the public portion of the meeting, or something like that, but after these minutes. The only other comment I have is on case number 2023-30. Again, this one was on the third line up from the bottom of the page on which the case appears. And the third line up presently says, "Mr. Donahue moved to reopen the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Murphy." And we simply needed to add to the end of that motion carried. Otherwise, it was just not clear. Those are the only two comments I found.
You know what I found was, Dave, they spelled your name wrong. On, okay, one, two, three, four, second paragraph. Top here.
Oh, ruler. That's okay.
All right.
Yep.
Just watching all looking out for you.
Good catch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any corrections? The one thing about, some of the.
Rachel, yeah.
By the way, I mean, I really appreciate that the minutes, I guess we now have, it's not, Rachel is not doing them, but they're being paired now, which by
Judy.
Judy Mostad, who's considered now the board secretary. And there are times that, on some of the cases where it was, I guess, a case, what's we're trying to find? Case facts that came up in discussion during, you know, our questions and so forth, that aren't really being addressed in the minutes. You know, and I'm not, you know, I mean, you know, they mentioned the fact that the board, they had discussion. But unless you go back to the tape, you're not going to know if there was a key thing that was discussed that had to do with the reasons why there was an issue in the case, why it was approved, particularly finding the facts. You've got to make sure the finding of facts are in this, are in here.
You know.
And I think, I think reading through here, I feel that there's some finding of facts that have been missed in the minutes. What, or am I looking at it wrong?
No, but I think maybe we can just resolve it by putting a statement in at the end that.
Full transcript could be.
Full board discussion is on Channel 8 of YouTube or whatever, just reference to it.
Right, okay.
Because.
You could, this could be a 19-page thing if you get that.
Yeah, because.
Yeah, we're going to start recording word for word, right? I mean.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Donahue, your lights are on in your car.
Oh, my interior lights?
Yeah, somebody's interior, you're right.
Is it the first, first car or the?
The white Forester or something?
Oh, it's me.
Just hit the button. I'll, I'll turn them off for you.
I'm going to adjourn for three seconds, three minutes. All right, three minutes adjournment.
You know, I noticed that, but I thought a lot of these cars, they stay on.
It shuts off after a little while.
Well, I had mentioned to him while I walked in, because we turned around, it appeared as though the lights were out.
Just had a question I was asking on, I was joking around, but am I technically allowed to adjourn the meeting? As the minutes stated, I mean, I said it last month.
You adjourned it?
You moved to adjourn.
Oh, it says move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, yeah, that's okay.
Move to adjourn.
I think we were all ready to move to adjourn.
I remember how I did all of them, but lifting or whatever.
But you've had three rotators?
Well, this one, the second time.
Did you go anywhere for your rotation?
We were down, have you ever go down to the Christmas festival or whatever, Highfield Hall?
Eastern Caribbean. Of course, one of the islands.
Standing by the door that said employees, I figured it was a Sunday at all. I wasn't paying attention.
No, it's Aconcobla, that's the west coast of Mexico, Barbuda, that's the place is where we're going, Barbuda and.
I couldn't believe it, that was an agony.
I guess we're supposed to be a tourist, so.
Couple of years, maybe a year or two, but in the meantime, I had the right done. But it ripped it out.
Zero desire to.
Partially. When the rotator was ripped.
I had a trip to, for work, to Cairo.
Especially at night when you're trying to get comfortable and sleeping.
It was like, nope, it's okay.
After the repair.
I've been to a lot of places in the world, but.
With my arm in a sling. The only time I could take it out was either for physical therapy or take a shower. Otherwise, you were in there for three weeks. And then the second three weeks popped in the air. Because he didn't want you to extend. And that I didn't mind, but then this morning.
Operations or what?
Operations.
When were you in Germany?
A place called Bylin Kirchen, north of Austin.
Over time, probably I lifted or pulled roots.
But you don't, you don't say when I did this, this happened.
Now, well, one of them, I actually carried a chair against my wife's. Now, well, one of them, I actually carried a chair against my wife's pleading.
I was there, um, it was an interesting assignment, I was really.
So it's her fault.
Loved it, I had to get out.
Well, no, not really, but anyway.
I was a US Air Force Staff Sergeant, assigned to NATO.
So, yeah, you maybe stopped by pushups. I've cut back to about twenty-five. Get too old for that now, anyway.
And there was, when we started, there was like twenty-eight of us.
You have any pain now?
We, we were building.
Pain now, pain free? Yeah.
By the time I left, there were about two thousand people.
We're back, as far as the, uh.
Okay.
My, uh, so, yeah, I just was particularly sort of finding the facts not being in here, and you're right, we'd probably refer to the case, refer to, you know, for full, please know, you, you know, in the, the minutes that the meeting was recorded and available, I guess, uh.
Hardwood Channel Eight now.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the easiest way, because we, to try to put the full discussion in minutes would be impossible.
Now, I realize, I guess, I guess the final, the final finding of facts is what I was concerned about.
Right.
We shouldn't do it there.
Now, I, it's, you might want to just let Amy know on that, that requisite case, that we've got the, um, recordings available for full discussion of all those hearings.
Um, okay.
She probably knows, but maybe she doesn't, I don't know.
Yeah, that's a good point. So, regarding the minutes, uh, no, no one has any other thing here, it's, uh.
Nope.
I'd ask, uh, for, uh, motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second that motion to be approved as amended, right, as?
Yep.
Vote, you can vote on it.
Okay, can I have a few hands on that, folks?
Aye.
Aye.
So what is exactly Rachel's position, though, then, since we have, um, Judy as our secretary? She's called zoning coordinator, but I, I have no idea what that means, what her duties are.
Actually, I don't have those duties, but I'll find out.
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to, uh.
Because I had asked, the only reason I, I bring it up is I had asked Rachel for Judy's, um, email, because I would have sent the comments directly, but it seemed like Rachel was gonna handle that, and then she didn't give me her email.
Okay, well, first of all, one of her, her is gonna be, she's, she's responsible as, uh, Alicia was regarding doing the decisions, all right? So she does the decisions, and then I think she's got more responsibility as far as, you know, some of the processing, the, the permitting and so forth, they kind of.
This is Rachel now?
Rachel.
Okay.
Okay, but I'll, I'll, I'll get a list of, uh, duties.
Okay, I don't really care, but I just, I thought it was curious.
Talk to our boards, we know who to go to.
Yeah, she's. She's at the back desk, and there's a young lady that sits in front.
No, there's two, there's, there's another lady who's joined the, I forget her name.
Yeah, I don't remember her name. Laura?
Laura, that's right.
I think you're right. Yeah, Laura somebody, yeah.
She's on board now, and, uh.
Rachel's in her office in the back.
She's in the back, right. Which, uh, okay, so, uh, let's see, next on the agenda is just to go over the, the meeting schedule. So, um, everyone got a copy of it?
Yep.
All right. All right, so here's the scoop. Now, sometimes the, uh, the dates for November, December meetings, in the second page is the recommendations, we can pick any of those dates, all right, for each month. Now, I know in the past, sometimes, um, the December and November, December meetings are consolidated into one meeting, isn't that correct, Dave?
Well, a couple of times, we had two meetings in a month, but I, I always thought that was most unsatisfactory, to do two meetings in a month.
Right. So, the, uh, looking at the calendar. So November, um, and obviously Thanksgiving's the twenty-ninth, we really don't want to meet on the twenty-eighth, all right?
No early applicants.
No, that's not gonna work. So we can go the week before.
Yeah, why, the proposed dates are all Thursdays and Fridays, why aren't they the Wednesday? Isn't that gonna conflict with another?
Oh, they had to do with availability of the room.
Oh. In both months, it's Thursdays and Fridays are the proposed dates.
So, on base on availability of the room, it would be Tuesday the twenty-first or, or, or Thursday the twenty-third. I'm sorry, excuse me, I'm sorry, that's it, that's, no, it'd be.
Thursday the twenty-first. Friday.
Twenty, so we'd have to go like Tuesday the twenty, twenty-first, or go, or go into, no, there's no dates available for this room, you know, last week in November.
But next year, Thursday, twenty-first is a Thursday next year. Are you looking at?
I'm looking at this. Oh, crap, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Year, year in this month, this year.
Thank you very much.
Well, I'm fine with the twenty-first, the Thursday, everybody else would be.
Yeah, I'd rather, I mean, if, if we can't do the Wednesday nights, I'd rather do the Thursdays that are proposed rather than a Friday night.
Absolutely don't want to Friday nights, yeah.
All right, so we'll go with November twenty-first.
And I would say the same thing for December nineteenth.
Then December nineteenth, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
You have something better to do on a Friday?
Open, usually.
Now, the hearing, the, the, we need to go to six-thirty PM now?
Well, that, okay, so that's one thing. Second thing, I brought up at the last meeting, was, obviously, our currently meeting is now at seven o'clock, we're the only board that starts this late.
I mean, I'm. But nobody's ever complained, to my knowledge.
At seven, of course, I mean.
At seven.
But no one's ever complained at, at the other boards at six or six-thirty.
We've, we've complained about how late it is.
Right, and I think, I think.
Good point.
That particular busy nights, not getting, you know, pressed past ten o'clock would be nice, and that extra half hour might help us out there.
I'm fine with that.
It, uh, any, any objections to the people who are here tonight that?
No, good night, Chris Murphy voiced his opinion last week, or last meeting, he was okay with that as well.
Okay.
Yep, six-thirty works for me.
Hal?
Oh, I'm fine with six-thirty. Yeah, I don't care.
Okay.
Doesn't make any difference, really.
Yeah, it, it occurred to me when I was at a couple of different meetings for the town, I go, why are we starting at seven?
So do you need a motion to approve this schedule, or we just do it?
Yes, I guess I need a motion to approve the schedule as, as revised.
I have a question.
Sure.
Now, the December meeting is going to be when?
So we're looking at, and we're looking at our twenty, two thousand twenty-four calendar, as John pointed out, December's gonna be the nineteenth. Which is a Thursday, the third Thursday in the month. And November is gonna be on the twenty-first, which is the.
Third.
Third Thursday of that month. And I know it's gonna, you know, we gotta make sure that people are filing, that, that we really highlight the fact that that's, and that means on the Wednesdays those two months, because it's gonna get screwed up.
I know they, on the sheet there, the, the proposed one, they've got TBD for the filing deadlines for the last two?
Right, that's gonna be, well, I don't know why it's, it's, the filing deadline is, is to be determined on, for the twenty.
January twenty-ninth, that should be.
I'm not quite sure why that's TBD.
Unless it would follow.
It should be.
I, well, it's probably because that would be December twenty-fifth, which is a.
But actually, it has to be, what is it, is it thirty days, Dave?
I, I don't remember off the top of my head.
All right, so they gotta, they're probably gonna revise.
They gotta revise the October twenty-fourth date.
They need to revise that one.
Right, Rachel will do that.
All right, and, uh, so I'll make sure that gets done. All right, so we have a, I think, someone make a motion to kind of hear me, schedule?
I moved that we accept the twenty-twenty-four meeting calendar with, uh, revisions as discussed.
Second.
Okay. I do think on this sheet, since it's gonna probably be posted, we ought to knock off that sentence approximately five weeks prior to hearing, because we're gonna have the dates, we don't need to have that up there, it's just confusing.
It was on last year's, I actually was comparing, yeah, I think it's just a template they've been using.
I still think it ought to come off.
Yeah.
Because they've got the, we've got the specific dates for the filing deadlines. What is Thanksgiving?
Actually, they're all, they're all looking at this, they're all, not five weeks, they're all four weeks.
Why it's confusing. It is very confusing, that's.
So, if anything.
I think it's five weeks.
Well, if we set our dates.
Five weeks except for October.
They're gonna, they're gonna fix the rest of this, we're only according, we're just setting our dates, right? Let them figure out when the, when those dates happen for filing.
Right.
No, I just want to knock off that sentence, which I think.
They can actually make the filing any date they want, that just is a cutoff of the person, so there's nothing, there's no requirement that it's four weeks or five weeks.
I think the thirty days you're thinking of is, is the waiting period after the hearing, before.
That's, that's true.
Before the permit can be issued.
It's, it's actually thirty days after the decision is filed.
Right, yeah.
Not the, not the meeting date, but when it's, decision is filed with the town clerk.
Yeah.
Then it kicks into the thirty days.
Yeah, that was one of my feedbacks, when I went through the process to the building department, is when you talk with them, they say it's thirty days after the meeting, so you kind of plan, and then you realize, no, it's thirty days after it gets posted, so it's really more like seven weeks after the meeting.
So, let's see here. All right. Okay, gentlemen, I wanted to, with your, um, approval, I kinda wanted to discuss Gail case, and I do have some hindoes.
We have to vote.
Part of this is to.
We have to vote on these dates?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. All those in favor of the, uh, revised schedule?
Aye.
Okay, unanimously approved, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, got a. Because I wanna, wanna kind of go over this, this is, I'll hand out here on special permits. Which I think y'all have this, but I just don't wanna talk about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so, the person who knows, understands Gail the best, he's sitting at his table here behind his deck, but as I've been going back and looking at various cases, there, there are some times I, and I could be wrong, I just feel that Gail has just seems to be a catch-all for like every, most every special, special permit, and I don't know sometimes if we've overworked, or at least I've overworked, and again, this is my discussing Gail tonight, because I feel there's some gaps at times in what my understanding is of it, so I'm doing this not to, to press upon the board members tonight, my opinion, but also to discuss, because if I feel I've got some gaps on Gail, I don't think I'm the only one, all right?
Okay.
So, Gail, the case itself that happened in Gloucester in two thousand eight, was the fact that, uh, this family by the name of Foot wanted to replace their cottage with a larger year-round residence, and a plan for that new residence called for a twenty-seven hundred square foot, two-bedroom structure that would exceed the bounds of the existing footprint of the existing house, all right? And a permit in the case was granted following determination by the Gloucester Board, that the new residents would not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood, which is, really, which we always, in all of our discussions on our permits, particularly a non-conforming house here, um, always include in all of our decisions that it's not, you know, we feel it's not going to be the, uh, uh, conforming, not detrimental to the neighborhood, and I think that's, that's the key thing on, on any of our decisions, that we, that we do for a variance or a special permit, all right? Now. One thing that decided to hit me last, at the last meeting, and actually we had a couple here, um, was the Pilgrim Road decision, which I thought we, was an excellent, we made a fine decision there, how it was structured, and then we've also had like that Atlantic Avenue case, you know, let's talk about Atlantic Avenue first, the, um, proposal was made in, in where they wanted to construct the footprint of the house, it was brought up based upon the setback of the deck, okay? Now, as I go through if, information on, on, um. On, on Gail, Gail, excuse me, okay? Is that?
We're revisiting Atlantic Ave, that was.
I will, because I'll tell you.
That was the property with your question, where the original deck was put in twenty years ago.
No, no, that was, that was, uh, Pilgrim Street.
It was a spiral staircase.
It was a spiral staircase, okay.
Case.
So, let me just, uh, hold on a second here, I misplaced my notes, I apologize.
But you remember, it had nothing to do with the deck, because it was a structure of the house itself that was non-conforming with respect to the sideline.
So, a- all of the. Here, I apologize. All of the, the thi, all of this, the review of Gail, it gets into always discussing the in, in intensification of the structure. It's, it's, there's never a discussion, there's no, nothing I can find in, in, in Gail reviews that talk about the existing setback. So like, when you have, when you have a deck, and I look at the, you know, the, the decks back there, now, and that is eight feet from the lot line, and it could be a, a five-foot wide deck, all right? We've been going by that so often, looking at the, the proposals come, they say, okay, well, the deck is eight feet from the lot line, and we're gonna put the foundation eight feet from the lot line. And I look at the deck as being, and the intensification of the deck would be, in a way, looking at it, a bigger deck, you know, not more havable, not a bunch of havable space. Now, it doesn't mean that if the house itself is within the setback, that you can intensify the house, you know, an intensification of the house as long as it didn't, wasn't derogatory to the neighborhood, or it wasn't a problem, but so often the cases come in front of us, they say, well, the deck is here, so we're gonna put the foundation here, and, and because of Gail, you're allowed to do that. And I just kind of wanna, and sometimes, like in Atlantic Avenue, and I, I didn't do it, and I, and many times when I go out and I, and I see these properties, I have a, I have a tape measure in my car, I measure, and it's probably more than once, the fact that, well, you're, you're above four feet or you're below four feet, so now if they're, you know, someone's below four feet, then go half away, half, halfway to the lot line. Well, if someone has done that, and we don't check, and they come back in with a non-conforming lot, well, it's, my deck's here, I'm gonna put my building here. You know, it, that's where I, I think we, sometimes, I'm just concerned that we, sometimes these projects are, are looking at the setback that's created by a non-havable space, being a deck, you know, versus intensifying, um, within reason for the neighborhood, the havable structure, all right? Now, that, that came up last, last meeting with Pilgrim, because the first, now, the final argument that was done, as I recall, was that a house itself was a non-conforming. Was that a house itself was a non-conforming, was an approved, non-conforming house. And the decision was that putting a spiral staircase on was only going to intensify, you know, the, the structure, because that's attached to the house. But, you know, by a foot or two. And, and we said, okay, that's fine. But the original argument was, my deck is six inches from the lot line, so you should be able to approve the spiral staircase. And I argued with the attorney at that point saying, wait a minute. First of all, the deck was never approved. But since it's been over ten years, it becomes automatically an approved, non-conforming. But because a deck that is not, that is not habitable space is way into, or closer to, is a, a short setback. That, that shouldn't be the reason why we are gonna look at, I mean, I'm looking at it saying like, why allow the habitable space? And it, and it needs to be focused in on the, the habitable structure itself, of how that's being intensified in relation to the neighborhood. But so often I, I, I see this, see these proposals coming in. And if it's been a deck, there, you know, the structure is, the foundation's going there, and that's the argument. Because the remote, that setback was eight feet, so we can put my, my foundation.
I don't remember where we've had a case where the only thing in the setback was a deck. It's almost always another portion. If you look at tonight's case, it's almost always a portion of the house that's also within the setback.
Well, you had Atlantic Avenue was because of the, well, for instance, we got Atlantic Avenue, and that was, they based that upon, you know, they said, well, our deck, our, our deck is out to here, so we want to encroach over. Now, looking back at it, and I went back down Atlantic Avenue the other day, and I was thinking about all this.
But the front, the front of the house was in the setback too.
The front of the house was in the...
Street.
Was in the public, public way.
Right, that's what I mean.
So, they, they pulled that, that's been leveled, and they pulled that whole, they did a whole new, great new foundation.
Right.
And the new foundation is, I mean, you know, I'm, I'm sure it's, it's, it's right there at the, it's within their property. It's not on town property.
But still within the setback.
Within the setback, correct. But the original, but it, it, and it's not, and that, that, that foundation is not really out of whack. It's in, it's in, it's incongruence with the rest of the neighborhood. It isn't that far off.
Right, but it was in the setback, it just extended beyond it into the street. So, it wasn't based on the deck.
No, the, the back was.
Non-conforming.
The back was, the back line was based upon the deck.
They didn't...
Well, no, if I remember right on that, on that one, the deck was, I mean, the house was sort of shaped, you know, like a, you know, like that, right? And the deck was here. And they were just gonna fill in the building.
The deck was in the, the deck was in the rear.
In the rear, yeah. So, the driveway was here.
They moved it.
They removed it and made it building, but there was already building structure that was that close to the property line.
Yeah, no, no, it wasn't that far off, but, but still, when the argument was made, they said, well, our deck is here, so we're gonna put the structure here.
I mean, it sounds like the root of your concern is the term "structure."
Well, structure and, and, and when we, we have cases that are based upon their, their layouts, based upon an amenity. You know...
Just looking in like the zoning definition of structure, like retaining wall is considered a structure.
Right, and the statue says a non-conforming structure.
Right.
Right, right, but it, it, but it, if they're replacing a structure, and again, I look at it also as, can we consider, um... A, a like-kind exchange? I mean, it's, it's, you know, the current, because it's, it's intensification of the structure. So, if the intensification is to that structure is a deck, you want to intensify the deck, go for it, all right? But if you want to intensify the habitable space, it's gotta go on its, its own merits regarding that habitable space and, and how that's gonna look and how it's gonna be in compliance with, with not being a problem in the neighborhood. All right? So, that was just one thing. And one thing that we, that I don't always do is, is, and I might do it most time, is measure the height of the decks. Because if it's, if it's over four feet, well, then, you know, that is, it, you can't do the same thing as a deck that's under four feet. Like I asked a question time about his deck. You know, his deck was all within the structure anyways, but, you know, a patio or, you know, a deck that's, that's under four feet, it can, it can go way out. And if someone's done that, if they're now coming in to do a raise and replace, or they're going to expand, remodel the house. And they're using the, the current deck as a footprint, being, okay, my deck's here, so I want to be able to, oh, it was under four feet, sorry. You know, we gotta always think, look at these things.
Yeah, but they cannot...
And I may be overthinking.
They cannot in a Deidrick case, where it doesn't go into the setback, where it's conforming, make it non-conforming without a variance. Just because the deck goes into a setback, doesn't mean that on other parts of the house that are conforming, they can suddenly make them non-conforming. That requires a variance. That's what Deidrick says.
Yeah, no, it's, it's right. And then, so if the deck is under four feet, or wait a minute, let's say it this way. If the deck is, let's say it's a four-foot deck. And the, the deck is within the setback, but the house isn't. All right?
Yep.
Okay? And so the house is, is, is...
The house is conforming.
House is conforming, but the deck isn't.
Right.
And it's, it's four feet or, or higher.
Right.
How does that play with Gale?
Well, they can extend it on the non-conforming side, but they can't create new non-conformities without a variance.
So, I have my house, and my house is twenty feet from the, from the sideline.
Right.
But I got a deck here, which is, is into the setback.
Right.
Does that mean the habitable structure is non-conforming?
I think, I think so. The new habitable construction would be non-conforming.
No, no, it's the existing.
No, the existing would be.
You gotta go in the existing, you gotta go in the existing situation. So, if now they've got a, a deck that's under four feet, and it's within twenty feet, but the house isn't. Then I would say that that is, that is, the house is conforming, and they can't expand that side.
What, I mean, I'm, I agree with you. It seems to me like structure versus anything, but in the code, there's a separate definition for building versus structure. Right? And like, rather than the decks, like, what would, like, I find confusing, like, a pool is a structure. Right? So, what if you had a pool that was non-conforming, an in-ground pool, that's very close to the property line? It's defined as a structure, and you decide you're gonna enclose it.
But I think that's looked at as an amenity.
But it's, it's defined as a structure. Pool.
Pool.
Pool, tank.
And it's, it's a certain condition.
So, if I, if someone came in and applied and said, all right, you know, we're not gonna enclose it, we want to be able to use it year-round. And I think it's already a structure that's non-conforming.
Right.
Would, would it get approved?
We have always, the board has always taken the position, if something is attached to the, the main house, that's part of the main house.
Right.
So, if it's a detached garage, no. But if it's attached garage, that's part of the house. So, that would support the non-conformity to the house. And that's what the board has always done.
No, it is, it is, yeah.
But it's not sufficiently clear. And I understand what you're saying, but...
Is there any, I mean, my question would be, is there any case law regarding decks converted to...
We'd have to go to outside counsel for that one. But Brian, your point is, I think, and help me understand, that we're just giving it, we say it falls under the Gale case or the Deidrick case. And you're suggesting is it, it may or may not, but we, we should be considering it under some similar circumstances. Is it detrimental to the neighborhood, gonna create more traffic? What a...
Well, well, first of all, I think regardless of the situation. Whatever we approve, should, we should not, we need to consider it as not being a detriment to the neighborhood. Okay?
Okay.
All right, so that's the, and not necessarily to one neighbor, but to the neighborhood.
Right.
So, that, that's the overall, that's, that's, that's the main...
That's always our overall.
That's a, that's a main principle here.
Okay.
All right? All right?
The, um... I think what Brian's trying to say is, the, the structure is the deck, it's not part of the house. He's saying, maybe we should just look at it as a deck.
I mean, I would...
Not, not part of the house.
I'm saying...
Again, this board has never done that where it's affixed. We've always taken the position, it's, it's part of the house. It's attached to the house, it's not just sitting there freestanding.
Right.
Like a detached garage would be.
And, and my, my thought here is, that's fine. So, you want to intensify, the, the non-conforming part of the structure is the deck, not the habitable space. And so, you know, if the habitable space, that structure, because the deck can be removed, okay? The habitable space of the house, and that's at twenty feet or far away from the lot line. But the four-foot deck attached to the house goes into the setback. And, and now the question here is, is, is they come in front of us, you know, you know, thinking of like a like-kind exchange. Okay, you got a deck, you want to intensify, but you can intensify the deck, but that doesn't necessarily mean that gives you an automatic situation to intensify the house. The house has got a, the house structure, and if it's, if it's at twenty feet, you know, and the deck is at four foot, then it's, is the house conforming? And...
Again, we've already taken the position.
That is, is as long...
The deck is part of the house, and therefore the house itself is not conforming.
So, someone's got a house, and they put a, a, a four-foot deck on there, that's, that at some point they just build it, you know, it could be whatever they've done. And nobody catches it, and ten years later, they now say, well, my house is now non-conforming.
Yeah, but that's a, a long-term strategy.
No, but, I, I realize, I realize, I understand, but the case...
By statute, if it comes non-conforming.
By statute. But the case on, on Pilgrim, the first argument was, by the attorney was, we have a non-conforming, and we're only six, you remember, we're only six inches from the lot line. So, you shouldn't have any problem approving the stairway. And, and, and he, he changed his argument after we had a discussion. To the fact of intensifying the house, which is at, you know, eighteen feet from the lot line, and then we want to make it, you know, fifteen and a half feet or sixteen feet with the stairway.
Yeah, could do it anyways.
Okay? And, and then we looked at it, at intensifying the, that situation, we said, fine. And I asked a question, you mean, you can get back to us and say, okay, I want to remodel the house and put my, I want to tear it down and put up a new, a new room, ten feet from the lot line? Well, I should be allowed to do that, because my, because my deck is only six inches from the lot.
But you don't consider a stairwell habitable space. A stairwell's not an habitable space.
I understand. It just, you know, I just been, this has been running through my head. Now, if that house, if that deck is under four feet, attached, you know, is under four feet. Now, it's in that situation where it's, it, it, does that, does that change the viewpoint? It still comes down to the, the height of, I mean, with intensification of a main structure. But it's, but it's, but so often, our cases come in front of us, they take the approach of setback. And the setback is not at all referred to in any of the Gale language. It's all about intensification of an existing structure.
And we've always said that that's the, the structure, part of the structure, same as the house.
And, and, and I look at it, my viewpoint is that, you know, we want to intensify the, the deck, go for it. But, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't think it automatically it says, now that's eight feet of, of, of a deck space can now all be built on a two-story house. That's, that's where I have an issue.
You mean, taking that deck and then reconfiguring it so it goes to the second floor?
Yeah. No, the whole, but it's all non-habitable space. We, the cases come in front of us, if the, if the, the deck has been out to here. You know, they now set, and it, it gets into that, in that case here where the guy had, I'll get into a second. But if the, um, they'll, they look at, I have a deck which is non-conforming, it's within the setback, and now I want to put a two-story addition.
Okay, but look, look at the language here. Section six, a non-conforming structure may be changed. So, they're changing it from a deck to habitable space. I think it's permitted.
Okay.
Right? I mean, it says, you can change the structure. As long as, as you said, the bottom-line test is it cannot be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than existing structure, but you can change the non-conforming structure.
All right, the other, no, I, okay, so...
Changing from the deck to habitable space, I, I think it's permitted under the statute.
The deck is, is under four feet, do you still think it applies the same way?
Well, is it the deck then conforming or non-conforming? If it's within half the distance to the setback, I would say it's conforming. Because that's permitted under the bylaw.
But does that give them the right to be building the top of that deck, the two-story house?
I, I think it's a change. Non-conforming structure may be changed. They're changing it from a...
But it's not non-conforming, if it's, if the lot line, if the set, you can go half the distance to the lot line.
Okay, if it's...
So, that deck, that deck could be at ten feet, and, and...
And that is conforming. That's what I just said, that is conforming. But if it's twelve feet, it's non-conforming, because it's two feet into the setback. And I believe section six says they can change it from deck to habitable space if they so desire, as long as there's no substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
And one question I have, and I know it's, you, you mentioned it a bunch of times in a few cases that's come up, but this one in particular. I mean, if they did that in that, in that area, the ocean view would be blocked. And I know that you've mentioned, you've mentioned, there's no, you know, ocean view, there's no rights unless it's...
No right of view in Massachusetts.
But still, I mean, when it comes to it, I mean, people pay a lot of money for that view, and then if you build a, that's, I mean, is that, could that be quoted as detrimental to the neighborhood if it's...
If the whole neighborhood, well, no, if, if Olson and Lodge in it is out of whack with the rest, is, is not incongruent, not congruent. It's a detriment to the whole neighborhood, not just one neighbor.
Right.
We could say, no, sorry, can't do it.
We could, yes.
Yeah.
Because like that house, like, if I did that at my house, nobody would care, it's in the woods, right? But like, my neighbors, if they could see the ocean and I'm building something on a deck, then it becomes, you know, I know it's not, it's not...
You should have bought the house on the ocean, that's what they told us, right?
Yeah, or bought the one next to it, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
It's, it's just, that's just the state of the law in Massachusetts.
All right, so now, on this thing here, the special permit. Get down to the bottom here, towards the bottom, says that no Gale case limits the provisions of some sections, A, four, five, and six. Okay? And that, and, and that is on your second page. Oh crap, what did I do with mine? Okay, oh, here we go. Let me pass this down.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Gale case limits the provisions of some...
I'll have this one for you. So... All right, so anyways, the, the Gale, looking down at four, five, and six. Can I get one issue that, and actually the building commissioner does this well, I just wanted to bring it up. All right, so we're, these, these are in our zoning books. And I believe Gale pretty much eliminates four. A lot of pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family to family residential structure may by right be demolished and replaced with a new structure on the same site provided that. Proposed new construction will conform with the current setbacks uncovered for a zoning district in which the lot is located. Well, Gale takes away that. Okay, so that's, you know, and based on the, the special permit, that's, that, that, that bylaw is, is, everyone agree, is not, cannot be used. And, um, the non-conformant's concerns aside the lot in question and/or the frontage of said lot. Well, that's, um, we're, it's a non-conforming, in our situation, it's a non-conforming lot to begin with, but... And on five. All right, A, we're all in agreement, I think, the replacement structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So, you know, again, this, the saying here on the, on the special permits, that Gale, the Gale case limits the provisions of those subsections. So, it, it doesn't, it limits part of five, it doesn't eliminate A, which we always use. The replacement of the structure will not cause or contribute to any... Um, the replacement of the structure will not cause or contribute to any undue nuisance, hazard, congestion in the neighborhood. So we're all fine with that, we, we think Gale does not change that, and actually-
No, it does, we cannot require that.
Will not cause, contribute to any undue nuisance, hazard, congestion in the neighborhood.
We can't require that.
Don't we, don't we say it doesn't contribute?
Now, we might be able to put a condition on, but we can't make this-
So this would be a condition?
We could make it a condition.
Okay.
You can't turn them down because you cannot deny a special permit.
You can deny, you can make it, okay.
Right.
Okay. All right, so, um, C is in conflict, I believe. The replacement structure will not increase any of the following existing nonconformities. Building coverage, site coverage, or setback.
That's out.
Yeah, so that's out. And D, the replacement structure will reduce at least one of the following existing nonconformities. Well, that, that's out.
That's out, yeah, yeah.
E, I'm not quite sure about.
E is out.
Why?
Because the only test is whether or not there's going to be a more substantial detriment to the neighborhood. That's the, the test, under Gale.
But it's, it, why doesn't-
Under the statute.
No, why can't, why isn't Gale, and this is the, our building commissioner's argument on this as well. I mean, I'm, I'm, he brought it up to me, and I'm thinking, all right, I gotta take, I'm gonna bring this up to the board and get an opinion. So Gale's saying, you can intensify your structure by that foot and a half that you want, all right? The zoning is saying, go ahead and do all that, you can intensify it, but you can't increase your habitable space by more than twenty-five percent.
Gale doesn't say that.
No, Gale doesn't, but our zoning board does, our zoning, I know Gale doesn't, but does Gale, does Gale totally eliminate E?
I'm sorry, what was that? Yes.
It does.
My opinion, it does. Case law has to supersede your zoning, right?
No, but it, it, it's saying the fact that, first of all, um, Gale, it's a, it's a nonconforming situation, because, first of all, the site, the, the acreage has been changed from forty thousand, went from twenty thousand to forty thousand, so anything was in this, it's, not forty thousand becomes a nonconforming lot, all right?
Or it could be a conforming lot, but a nonconforming structure.
True, thank you. So, so on Gale, you can't have, what we're, what you're saying here, and this is where I'm not, I'm hesitant about. You can say, yeah, Gale says you can intensify your, your house and make it wider, and make it, you know, add three hundred square feet of space, as long as that three hundred square feet of space per the town bylaws doesn't exceed twenty-five percent.
No, Gale doesn't say that at all. Gale says you could increase one or more existing nonconformities, provided there's no substantial, that they- The increase is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
So basically, so, so-
So you could have a small house and increase it by a hundred percent.
Okay.
What's the effect on the neighborhood? You know, substantial, if it's a, let's say a twelve-hundred square foot house, but it's into the setback, and they want to now make it a twenty-four-hundred, or even a thirty-six-hundred square foot. What's the adverse effect on the neighborhood, substantial detriment?
To me, the only way that would be an adverse effect would be if all, if the rest of the neighborhood was twelve-hundred square foot houses, right? And now you're going to have this toxicity on the street, but if, you know, that's why I think even, you know, the thing you passed out, Brian, that, that, where it talks about the, the Bjorkland case, you know, it, it, it notes the increase in the length of the structure and the height of the structure, but I think that can only be determined based on the structures that surround it, right?
Yeah, no, I agree.
Correct, oh, yeah, so-
If I, you know-
We had a case on Mile Street, a few, back in, I don't think it was April or May, when I first looked at the site plan, and you want to go from nineteen feet from the lot line to ten feet, I'm thinking like, oh, wow, okay. You know, then I went out there, drove the street, and almost all the houses are ten feet from the site, from the, from the lot line.
So that's, I see, I look at the same thing with this twenty-five percent, and saying, if I have the smallest house on the street-
Exactly, exactly.
And, and I want to go with a bigger house, are you going to limit me to a twenty-five percent increase, even though my neighbor is a hundred percent bigger than me?
Where?
I, I think the Gale case did away with that.
I totally, I, I totally agree with it, all right? It was a question that was brought to my attention.
Yep.
And, uh, and I also think the, not being able to do it, then, I, I don't know who comes up with these things, not being able to do it within a ten-year period. It's like, you know, in that, that law there.
Uh, I found absurd.
So, all right, so all agreement that E is, is, is a conflict with Gale.
I mean, we're living in a period right now where homes are being torn down, and multi, and then homes are increasing by two or three thousand square feet. To your point.
Yep.
I mean, there's, there's lots out there that, um, they're increasing the size of the homes, it seems just this evening. That home's going to get increased four hundred square feet. The house that's next door, there was no one who were near that size.
Yeah, there was a, driving the neighborhood, at the end of the street, in a Moody's Street, there was a large house. And then, at about ten or twelve, fourteen Moody's, there was two houses crossing each other at the other end of the street that were in that scriptbook range. Other than that, they were all small ranches.
Yep.
All right, but there was, there was a, you know, it, uh, you know, within a nine iron shot, either way, houses that, that were, were there. So no, so let's say that there weren't, and there weren't any other houses in the neighborhood, and there were, but let's say if there weren't any other houses in the neighborhood that were, that were, uh, you know, two stories. How, you know, how were you feeling about that?
Well, even in Borland, when you come, look at these, the question still is, what is a substantial detriment to the neighborhood?
Right.
Yeah.
I, I think in most cases, you're increasing the value of homes, you know?
We have, this question keeps coming up about as to what the neighborhood is. Now, the neighborhood is not the homes right next door.
Right, right.
You're going to drive around the area to determine what the neighborhood actually is.
Exactly, it's like, you know, in our, in our resort case there, I asked the question, how many, how many people got a butters' notices? And there was like twenty, right? It, it, it was just-
From the folks across, three to twenty-eight.
So do we consider the fact that neighborhood being whoever qualifies to the butters' notice, that's the neighborhood?
I, I don't know, I think you just have to drive around and see what you think.
But I also think the neighborhood is not a static concept either, right? I mean, they evolve, right? I mean, years ago, you know, people had, you know, a one-car garage or a carport, and then, you know, now everybody pretty much, if they have a garage, it's a two-car garage, if they're going to build one, they have the room, you know, it's, you know, who has a deck versus an enclosed, you know, three-seasons room and everything? You know, the, the neighborhood evolves. What might not have been in keeping with the neighborhood, you know, twenty years ago, might today be, you know, with the improvements your neighbors have made, in keeping with the neighborhood.
We had that one down off of Bank Street, the one that they wanted to convert the garage.
Yeah.
And because it's a detached garage, they were not allowed to do it. But the question arose with the neighbor next door, as whether that was the same-sized house. And that house was being, I just bought it the other day, it's beautiful. But what we did is, we discussed all the homes within that neighborhood. That included Bank Street.
Right.
The street going up Bank Street and going down towards downtown. That's the neighborhood, not just the structures, close proximity.
And that's why I made-
Not just immediate butters.
Right, right.
That's why I made a point in the Wacoastic case, that the people that are suing now, was not the neighborhood member, uh-
No.
Attorney, um-
Riley was one of them.
Riley, said, they were the neighborhood, and I just wanted to make sure we had in, actually, I think it's in the, the minutes.
Well, yeah.
Because I stated it, that they were not the neighborhood, there were a lot of houses in that area around-
That's why I asked, I asked Marion Rose, how many, how many butters' notices went out?
She didn't know.
She didn't know, and I thought, wrong. I had checked.
I do remember, she didn't know, yeah.
I, I had checked, and I, and I knew, you know, because it's, I want to make that neighborhood point, that it just isn't-
Right.
The folks next door.
Right.
I mean, I, you know, it's just, it's, you know, the whole area. All right, so I, I just want to go over this, because it, it, there are-
Six is no good either, Brian, just before you-
Four through six is gone.
Six is gone, that's-
No, four through six is, no, 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 the five A is, is still good, okay? That's, that's the end.
Okay, yeah.
Five A basically says the same thing as Gale.
Right.
All right, um, so that's the only one that, that stands there. Uh, six is, um, and six is, is gone as well.
Yep, so only five A stands.
Yep.
All right, but, um-
Well, it still stands in the bylaw, but as far as-
Well, it does legally enforceable, they're, they're all good, yeah. Well, I'm hoping that part of our discussion tonight is, let's make sure we're taking, making these recommendations that the zoning laws need to be amended.
This, this document needs to be amended, yeah.
Exactly, now, we, we finally have a, a new planning, um, directive, all right, so it does-
Hopefully, you'll be here more than a month or two.
And, and, uh, in the near future, I, I do want to-
She, I think it's a lady, isn't it?
When we have, uh, and start, start, start keeping a file, whatever of your thoughts of what, what zoning things need to be changed.
Christine Flynn.
Oh, you're doing that, right, Brian? You, you have-
I, I, I have got my own, but I want everyone to kind of just keep track of it too, and, and as you look at the book, do you think there's something that should be adjusted? Which is bringing, I want to bring it back.
Our last meeting, where that calculation was twenty-two, and nobody knew where it came from or why it's there?
Yeah.
Is that in your book to get, to eliminate? It needs to be.
No, I didn't, no, I want to first understand it before I eliminate it, I still don't understand it. I, 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 I'd like to know why, like, the next time-
Why do we need it?
I don't know why, no, I don't-
But put it, put it in your book, so at least it's a topic of discussion. Get rid of it.
The next time we have a, you know, an architect here presenting something, I'm going to ask him a question. Hey, by the way, has nothing to do with your case, can you please explain this to me? You know, I'm going to ask, I want to ask a question. I mean, our town attorney didn't know anything about it, our building commissioner doesn't know anything about it, you know?
Well, the ones that asked it, the planning board, it came out of the planning board.
And I, wait a minute, I asked, well, I, I, I didn't ask the planning board-
Not the planner, because they have been revolving, but, uh, the planning board, whoever's been on the planning committee there, that's, for a while, they should know.
The, the secretary didn't, but that's just how, you know, you need to ask the planning board, you know, or, or council.
Right.
They didn't have any back, you know, it, it just, so I do agree with you, Ken, the fact we just got to toss that sucker out of there, because particularly where their Panhandle waters are now, you know, approved in the town. So that pretty much eliminates the issue, you know, that it's got to, if you can put a house and sit it within proper setbacks of twenty, twenty-five, whatever might be requirement of that, that zoning, then we're good to go.
I don't know if you guys got, did you guys get the invite to complete the survey for the new, um, local comprehensive plan?
No, I did not.
The land use master plan for the town of Harwich? It, it, it's weird that it, it's for the town of Harwich, but the conservation trust was the people that sent out the survey. Yeah, the local town planning committee, which advises the town planning board, has created an introductory survey of four questions for-
Oh, that one, yeah, 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 yeah.
Before we left, when Paul was here with the planning director, he and I, and when we camped on Jack, and we were meeting once a month, and he was keeping a file of all the things we discussed as far as, you know, zoning things that need to be changed, you know? The other one, which I think is need to be changed, which we brought up, Regatti, the, uh-
Multi-family verse, the multi-family verse.
Multi-family, if it allows a multi-family, it should allow a two-family.
Right, yeah.
You know, that, that kind of scenario.
Four-fives first.
But, that being the case, I think there's adjustments we can make gradually on the zoning, without having to get into a full comprehensive zoning thing. I'm, I'm going to ask, you know, Julie, uh, you know, our, our liaison on the second's office, that we'd like to be able to, and work with the planning, uh, planning board, you know, put a couple of these things, like the multi-family, and just get that on the town meeting, I think, to, you know, to make a change. And now that there's a new planning director, there's someone here can properly, you know, put it to right. All right, so, I guess we're, this, we lost that discussion, I thank you guys, because I just, sometimes need to go through and, and clarify my own head, you know, how we approach things, but I, I do, um, at least, I'm going to continue, and, just so we understand, some of these situations when they're applying for stuff, me at, uh, you know, some of these, uh, you know, deck scenarios, I just want to feel and track them, and do it in the permitting process of the height of these, that might be. Now, the last thing in the agenda I want to bring up on the new business is the, uh, you know, the suit against, you know, by, uh, your butters. I guess, uh, peeling the case here, naming the, you know, obviously the Harwich Board of Appeals, as, uh, even the quality check, you know, people being, being sued.
Well, we are too individually, but-
Right, so I just want to know that fact that, I just want to discuss this in case if anyone's got any concerns, that, um- Yeah, the town and town council handle everything here, uh, we do, we have nothing to do. Now, um, the fact that the complaint is filed against each member of the board, that is standard operating procedure. The, uh, I've never seen a case that ever came back to haunt an individual on a board.
No.
Okay? It's just the fact that naming the board and all the people on the board as, as a, you know, standard procedure, that, um, I don't have any concerns about it. If, if anyone does have concerns about it, you know, let me know, and we can really, we can discuss it here tonight, all right? But I think it's, I think the last one that came through was one that you were on, that came in last spring, after three years, or whatever, two years.
Terrible decision.
Huh?
Terrible decision, the judge there-
Bless you.
Bless you, whoever it was, the judge there based the decision on the detriment to the neighbors, not the neighborhood.
That's right.
Terrible decision, and if those people appealed, I think they would prevail, now, I don't know if they did or did not.
On, on this case, they're saying the fact that you, you can't have more than two uses on a lot, and it should have been a variance, not a special permit. That's, that's the, that is the summary that I got out of the, uh, situation. But anyways, when I did receive it, I sent an email to both the town administrator, as well as the attorney, saying, just say, hey, guys, just here, make sure you're all aware of this. And, um, it was a double-check that the town council was aware of it. You know, they had that, I, I had the town administrator's office do that, double-check, I didn't do it, but they double-checked that the, the town attorney had the information. So, whatever this docket comes up regarding the first, uh, I think, uh, case conference in November twenty-seventh, uh, we have, uh, we have nothing to do with it, we're going to have nothing to do with it. And I doubt, when this goes to any type of, uh, actual case itself, um, it, it's going to be done based upon the written decision by the board, which, when that, when we draft that decision, um, I did send a copy of it to Marion Rose, make sure that we had considered all of, that we had included all the statements of facts that were presented at the meeting, you know, they didn't leave anything out. And, uh, they made a, and so, uh, when it was finally signed by me and went to town clerk, it was done after I verified with the, um, the applicant's attorney that all the statements of facts were in there, so, you know, their case is properly presented in the decision. Or our decision is properly presented as a statement of facts.
And they will, the Wacoastic lawyers will handle the burden of the litigation. All Amy, our town council, will do, is file appearances.
Right, exactly, no, that's what I understand.
Yeah, she won't do anything, she just files the appearances, just that, that, that we have to answer and whatever, but the actual-
When you say file appearances, what does that, what does that mean?
Well, she appears on behalf of us, the defendants in the board.
So you don't think that Amy was going to be showing up to the, she'll show up at the-
I, I don't know, she has to go, or she can just do it by paper. Usually, you just file an appearance and answer paper.
Okay.
But the Wacoastic lawyers, whether it's going to be, um, Attorney Singer's firm and Attorney Rose, if they're going to get somebody else, I don't know. But they will take the burden of the litigation on defending the decision.
I was interested, since I read it online, that there, the, uh, people who are appealing have brought now a third, uh, legal team.
Yeah, they, people from Boston. Because the local attorneys, a lot of them, and that's why I say I'm not sure about Attorney Rose, they might not do the litigation.
Yep.
So they might get a litigator to represent Wacoastic. I, I don't know, maybe they do litigate, I really don't know.
Yeah.
What they do.
Brian, my only question is, as public servants, and I think I asked you this question, that do we, are we, do we have fallen to errors and omissions or liability coverage? How does that work for as a public servant?
Well, what I understand is that the town has, and I don't know what the level of assurance is, but the town has insurance for errors and omissions. But it, um, zoning is, is a local issue, and if the court decides the fact that, you know, we should not, we should have issued a variance as opposed to a, a special permit, that's just, they're reversing our decision and saying it should have gone this direction. It, it is not, now, if, 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 uh, we were, we were colluding, you know, with the applicant's attorney, and, you know, violating open meeting laws and doing everything out of sight, or, you know, uh, you know, someone, someone personally benefited from the decision, then that would be a separate, separate scenario, okay? That's, that's fraud, you know, it's whatever, bribe, you know, I mean, obviously. Uh, but if, if we're, if we abide by open meeting laws and, and good faith, particularly after we consulted on more than one point of, of, of fact with the town's attorney, all right, it's just viewed at, the court's saying, no, this is the direction it should have gone in, and at that point, they could reverse it, and then Wacoastic could be back here, uh, requesting a variance based upon the ruling of the court. You know, but it doesn't, it doesn't, now, anybody can, can sue anybody for a frivolous reason, all right? You know, everyone is subject to someone filing a, a suit for a frivolous reason, and if that happened as us towards a board, then, um, I'm quite confident, if that comes under the town, the town's attorney, and everything else, uh, would be representing us.
I would ask you to, to clarify that with our city, if we do indeed have individual liability coverage, because we're individually named at this point.
Sure, I mean, I'd be happy.
If you would ask that.
Be happy to do that, you know, it's, uh.
In everybody's best interest to know the answer.
Yeah.
How deep is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, I hear you saying, and, and I will, I will.
Appreciate that.
I will double-check that.
And just for the record, just to clarify, you don't mean to imply that this suit is frivolous?
No, no, not at all.
Okay, because it's on the tape, that's why.
No, what I said was, if, if somebody would sue us individually.
Exactly, no, I understand what you're saying, I just wanted to clear for the tape.
No, this was a, I think they filed a reasonable.
It's a legitimate lawsuit.
It's a, it's a legitimate, uh, uh, you know, motion to, uh, it's a legitimate appeal, and, um, they state facts, which, again, that's their opinion, and, and, you know, we stated our opinion and agreed to it as a, as a board on the application form. So, but I was referring to the fact that any of us could, could, could get a frivolous suit, you know, by anybody, okay? That's, that could happen, individually, not the board. But no, this is not a frivolous appeal, but also, I, I thought I had clarified that. Just to make sure that, but that will become an errors and omissions, and I will check, uh, as requested.
Thank you.
What? The town coun, sorry, the town administration, for what our coverage is. Any other discussions you wanna add?
Yes, the November meeting, uh, neither Brian or Al are gonna be here.
Actually, that got changed.
Oh, you're gonna be here?
I'm now gonna be here.
Perfect.
And, uh, my, uh, trip is, my trip is canceled.
Perfect.
I'll be here in, and actually, you're gonna be in November, too, right? Okay, originally, I had misread your email to me, but.
It's okay, I didn't know what I said either.
Uh, is anybody else here that's not gonna be here in November?
Nobody's up here.
Next one, okay, all right.
What's the date of the meeting in November?
Actually, I could just look in my book.
I got it.
Twenty-ninth.
Okay, yeah.
Yep, no problem.
All right, so, uh, any old business? Uh, we, I have no correspondence, and, uh, it is now, uh, eight thirty-six, I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.